Yep, seven P M. Did everyone have a chance to look at minutes from the previous meeting? I think we all got a copy of that. Any corrections or additions you need to notice on that?
I'm moved to approve.
Okay, a second?
A second.
Larry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, then we need to motion to approve tonight's agenda. Move group rule.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we'll recognize our visitors. Angela, is she here right?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I'm getting some, ah, sorry, I'm lawyer guy. I'm packing up the water bill, that three thousand dollars off because on the special assessments. And I found the email between Isaac Zimmerman and Mr. Ken Rodmacher, the attorney at the time, saying that you had agreed to drop the felony and all that, but you also agreed to take care of the balance on the water bill civilly, which means to me civilly, did you take me to court for it, am I correct?
Yes, and that's what we did.
No, no one took us to court about the water bill at all. We did not go to court on the water bill.
Yes.
No.
We let the courts handle that, didn't we?
You let the courts handle, you let the courts handle his case, the felony and all that, but
We had to sign paperwork for you though.
That was for, that was for, and I had that too. That was for dropping, paying the six hundred and eighty-five dollars for reimbursement for the
When, when that tax assessment, and I wish Trish Lane would've stayed here, and we should've thought of her coming in. When I called to ask her what that was, one of it was for when you concreted the thing, one was for the trash truck that was
That was for Schlinker's house.
And then one was for your dog biting hunter. Those are the three that, when I talked to her about that monies that year, those were the three things she told me it was.
No, it's the seven eighty-five?
No.
Is that what you said?
That's what Trish was telling me it was.
Thirty-seven hundred dollars is for two things, the water bill is included on that.
I don't think so.
Because all you guys signed was, um, you guys signed to drop the felony, make a misdemeanor, pay the restitution, and anything else. Fees, it says here. Fees would be dismissed, and the felony would be dismissed, and the balance on the water bill would be taken care of civilly.
I believe we did that.
No, because we're on, no, we're
We had to sign a sheet of papers from the courts, that if you even missed one payment, everything went back and your payment was brought back up, so I don't see how that's not silly.
That was part of the deal that you had worked out on his case.
How many payments did you guys make?
How many, we mean, how many payments have we made?
Well, if you're saying once your assessments.
I got the bill that, that last year bill picked up, and I paid everything up, and I've been staying with you for a reason.
Yeah, the one thing I get every month is, it's not every month, it's whatever, that Mark paid, Mark gets it's a hundred dollars for, to go to pay for, goes paid to the county, and it's coming to us, so
Correct, the other was the deal we signed.
He pays the county for this stuff, and then they reimburse them. I just got one for a hundred and sixty-nine dollars a payment through them, from the assess, that paying on the assessments.
Yeah, over how many years?
So I think I've gotten maybe three or four payments.
So what's your, I don't know.
The restitution is for six hundred and eighty-five dollars for the stop on the curb. That's what the six eighty-five is for, that is to be paid after he was released. But you guys, what you signed was the, to agree to drop the charges and all that, but you didn't take me to court civilly for the water because it's not in the paperwork that you signed.
Okay, but if you miss one payment, then you start all over again, so if you want to bring it back up, and then you owe us the whole, a total amount again, we can go there, we just don't want to. Does that make sense? That was our agreement, if you miss one payment to us.
Where, where did that add me from?
I remember that, one, it was
Well, we can dig into that, but I, what's your, I mean, what is your complaint, just that we didn't do it civilly, you're saying?
Yeah, because that's what I was thinking, it should've been done civilly, because we didn't sign, if you're suing someone or taking them to court civilly, the other person should be notified. There's nothing on the end of court.
The water, I think she's talking about is being paid for because their water was shut off for that year or something. But before then, they had got a big bill there.
I know, yeah.
Now, when you, it, it came to, you paid off a lot of stuff, but before that, at the end of the, what is it, three?
I paid off a lot of stuff when I went to you.
Every other year or something, you sent it in for assessments if it's not paid? So a portion of it was sent to assessments, and when you went to court, you had more for that year that you were supposed to be paying.
Well, what we were shooting for was thirteen hundred and forty-five, or what, the original criminal case was thirteen hundred and forty-five dollars in the water. While the case, the federal, uh, felony got dismissed, and with the other charges, so the other thing to me, is you didn't
You're gonna answer, well, every month, whether you had water there or not, you were shut off, you still have a bill every month that wasn't paid. So that is where you still had that big bill sitting there that you were paying, but before that, that whole year, you had every month that bill coming.
So what do you want us to do? You want us to sue you, is that what you're asking?
Trish Lane said she would have to go back to court and have it redone.
Well, every time we go back to court, it costs all of our taxpayers that much more money, so we're trying to avoid that.
Well, now they're coming after me, because I
Because you didn't make your payments, Angela.
Well, and part of it is because you got three years of that taxes due, whenever you
No, they're coming because one year, they come up with the thirty-two hundred dollars on my special assessments.
But the reason, the reason they take your house is if you get three that you don't pay. So you owe for eighteen, you owe for nineteen, and you owe for twenty.
But we did, we paid for once, we don't owe for all of them, we owe for two.
Because I talked to Trish about this, and she said all those assessments were the dog bite, weighing the truck, and
But the way the truck was a slinker's dump, because they let it all sit there.
But it was your trash that was taken down there.
We went back and got that that morning, there were three bags.
Trish had told me, oh, the way it can be
Well, we don't, we're not doing this tonight, so if you want us to dig it open, we
I'm gonna do this table, you start.
You always move the table, why don't you just
Well, what do you want us to do besides that? I mean, we can
Well, I don't have, you say you went to court, I, I didn't, nobody took me
We have the lawyers take care of it, we signed off just like you did.
Well, I talked to Isaac, he told me to do with you guys first.
Every time we call that lawyer, it costs all of us taxpayers money, why would we keep calling him and dropping?
I talked to him already, and I told him about it, he said go to the city first.
That's because you can't, he can't, it's because, are you gonna pay him the fee, because the city, when you call them, the city has to pay a fee for that.
Well.
Well, what would you, I mean, what are you asking us to do, how about that?
Do you have the paperwork where you, you guys took us to court for that, because I don't have any paperwork for that.
I don't have any paperwork for that, I mean, we
But if you assign something that, then you should have a copy of that.
Well, not on these, what I'm saying, we can sure find it.
And that's what I was asking, could you get a copy of that, so I could see, because I didn't get anything. And Dawn over there is really good about getting
I'm sure you got plenty of copies of that, but we can try and dig another one.
Really, are you?
I'm pretty sure you did, because that's, yeah, that'd be certified mail, but anyway, we can find that and just come in next meeting and we'll
Yeah, pull me off some more, because this is what you guys always do.
No, we helped you out, we're not helping you out anymore, that's the problem.
Well, I don't care, really, that's not a problem.
We can, but we don't want to spend the money to do it, so I don't understand what you're asking, so We helped you guys out big time back then, and now it's coming back to bite us, that's not gonna happen, it's not gonna happen.
I would like to see the court papers then.
Okay, we will have Isaac find them for us.
Have Isaac.
And Jeff Reiser, if not, because he would know where we put them. Yeah. Anything else on that thing? Alright, you're welcome to stick around, I'm gonna take off, it's up to you, we won't find it tonight, obviously.
I know, I know, I thought
Should get what we can for you.
I'll just hold on over the course of this, good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, Brian?
Take your dog, John?
Okay. I think you all know me, I'm John Law.
Yep.
Funny question over here now. Uh, we'd like to put a bathroom in out the county shop, we have no running water out there, and we wanted to, if we could tap into your system. We bore under the road, that's all our cost, we just want to know if you guys allow us to tap in, whatever the services are. Metering charge and
Absolutely, I thought we talked about this.
Yeah, I think it was Did that kind of spend about three, four years ago? Now, it's not gonna be where Dean's off, so I gotta take the rain on it.
Oh, okay.
I'm moved to approve that we allow them to tie onto our system.
It might take a year, because we gotta figure out bore, if we're gonna bore over there, or if we're gonna get a welder, but I just want your blessings if I can make a snap decision so we can tap in.
Absolutely, yeah, we don't have a problem, then we won't, yeah.
Okay.
Seconded by Jeff Hyden. Okay, all
Where do you want us to tap in, guys?
Yeah, I guess that's the other
Are we tapping in from that fire hydrant by Graham there, or where are we tapping in?
I think we have, what we have looked at was right where that highway goes, it'd be the corner line that goes over to the Dakota Valley shop.
Okay, see, I, because I took measurements today, we took measurements from the back of the shop, right to the fire hydrant. Is where I took the metering wheel and measured, and it was like four hundred and eleven feet over the highway and stuff. So if we would go that way, then it'll be a little different, because then we gotta go around the building, the old cold storage. See, I just went from the back of the shop right to that fire hydrant.
Where's that fire hydrant?
Right in front of Graham's house.
Right in front of Graham's house.
Yeah, I don't think it's making any difference, really.
I mean, that's where I took, that's where we took the measurements from.
Is it, is it Gackle City Waters or rural water?
It's rural water.
But you guys are Okay? Because I gotta get, I gotta talk to State Two Seating Board under the road.
Sure.
And how would your sewer work? Your sewage part?
Well, sewer
There, there we put our own tank in, but we need approval for the sewer due from you guys? To take a sewer in?
You're not in the city.
Oh, we're not in, okay.
No, then we gotta deal with some, some central
Because you don't want to tie into the city sewer.
No, no.
Because man, that would be a long run.
That'd be a long run. Feet of the state highway department, but they just tied in, I think.
Okay.
The H Trump line?
Yeah, whatever is the most feasible for you guys to get there, I guess.
I guess, the deal I'm over here is just to make sure, if we can do it, and you're gonna give me a kind of a blessing, I gotta do a lot more research. But I just, you know, if you would say no, then I got a lot of other errors. By the way it sounds, it's no problem. Okay.
Yeah, seconded, and then I just need to call in favor and pass it.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries on.
Thank you. Yes.
That gravel pile at the colony crush down here.
Yeah.
Can the city buy gravel off of it?
Yeah.
We can.
Yep. One of the other commissioners might say no, but that's my business.
Good note.
I mean, this is reality, it's We help all of this, now.
And we'll keep track.
Yeah, that's no problem.
But you allow it to haul it herself.
Yeah. Just take, I don't know what you guys got for equipment, just wait, because that's sealed over here yet, don't you?
Yep.
Just random weird deals, and you know about where you're at and get close. We're all in good faith, I, those that don't trust can't be trusted, I'm not that way.
Alright.
Yeah, give her hell.
We need some gravel off there on that road going to the lagoons. You know, we filled it with clay and it's a mess. Or, you know, it's
Did they ever fix that access road from thirty-six over to that pile? Do you still have to go up there?
Yeah, that, that's been talented roads, but yeah, they're gonna have to do something again, because the north wind took the road.
Oh, no.
It looks nasty, it needs more gravel.
I seen them out there with that motor and
They're coming back over.
Yeah, they're gonna have to repair there.
Bring some stuff over to pull in, then they're gonna do a few more. Okay, thank you.
One question, if this does go through, are you guys cost sharing, or is it all on us, or? I'm just asking.
Can I have some court documents for it?
The curb stop would be over by the height.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Alright, like I said, Moore won't be here for another fifteen minutes, so we can, we'll just jump back to them then. Um, so we'll go down to city meetings, Bill, what do you got for us?
I have a couple things here. This is what, the month of March of the garbage. Each week, there should be four papers there a month.
Is there a comparative? Um, to what you used to pay.
So if you give me an idea. I can't even tell you what we used to pay, because they never, down there
They just set a bill today, which was been eight hundred and something.
Yeah, probably would've been
It'd be nice to know.
I'll let you know in a second.
That's for a month down there?
That's for a month, yeah.
I mean, the eight hundred?
Yeah, Jane's not saying
Well, if you look right here, from last month, from the other one, was eight thirty. Twenty-five on here.
Blue under a thousand here, so So What's the difference on that, but I didn't see that.
Did we use trash there the whole month last month?
The whole month of March.
Okay, because if you look on your, if you look on your financials, last month, I paid them eight hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-five cent for our tickets.
So we're up a little, but we knew that going in.
It wasn't as much as I thought it was gonna be.
Well, that's good, but there's more restriction, right?
Yes.
How they told me, we're good?
Everything we could inspire dumping up there, it's actually pretty nice, you dump inside a building.
Okay. No minor roads, no minor hills, no minor hills. Put tracks on your unit.
We're getting stuck, I hope.
Always a problem.
Uh, I had to take the driver's truck up to Poland's, we had a bolt that broke off. And it was very difficult to get to, I couldn't drill it out, the bolt was so hard.
Not to bed more?
For those. Yeah, sweep in the back, right where We had just two bolts that hold it on each side, one of the bolts broke off. Even Poland, he said he had a difficult time getting that bolt out, so, the one that broke off, but that's all fixed now, so
Had we not fixed it, then it broke the second bolt, that whole thing that actually just rushed it in and bumped it off the hell.
Well, let's get it.
And then we got, uh, had them order gaskets to fix the two cylinders in the back for that slide. One's about ready to pop out, so they're both looking pretty bad.
They're not pitted up or anything, or we need new ones?
No, I don't think so.
Get much up on there?
Shouldn't get much of anything.
You're gonna have somebody, you're gonna do it, or you're gonna have somebody do it?
Well, I'll take it back to Poland. Cleanup week, uh, we've been having a lot of questions, asking, we're gonna do a cleanup week this year, we're not gonna do one. Um, we're here, I just
I don't know, I'd like to talk to the park board and see if we can coordinate with that, I mean, I don't know, one thing I don't do in there. What did they hire? They hired that guy to do it. Wayne? Oh, do a lawnmower over there? Oh, that's just independent, okay, well, I just to hear, get the community in on that, but
I haven't really heard what other cities are doing, I guess, have you guys heard anything, as far as, or Bill, they're doing them, or?
I haven't heard.
Where did we take that stuff before?
Huh?
Where, where did we take all the couches and stuff, and stuff like that from cleanup week?
To wish it. We could throw them in the truck there, because it'd be fair to implement. The only thing we thought of was if we do a cleanup week with the couches, and mattresses, and climbers, you know, we do it, you have one week to get it out. You know, we have that cleanup week, and after that, it's
It's more than no cities would offer, so I think that's more than fair.
But I was just reading out forty-eight bucks a ton for that stuff?
Yeah.
That's a lot of couches.
So
Well, I called the state health, and asked if we could
Yeah, what keeps, what keeps us from putting that up here?
Stockpile them down at the city dump, and then when we have a load, then haul them up. And they said, yes, we can, but they recommended we put it under shelter. Because if they were paying by weight, as a matter of fact, the lady I called to is the inspector, was the inspector for the dump. She said, you gotta realize, if they, you know, if they're out there, and you get a rainstorm, instead of weighing fifty pounds, it's probably gonna weigh three hundred.
Couches out there, maybe we'll get some frigging rain.
But they would allow us to have them out there, stored separate, because they definitely don't dare put them in the burn hole.
No, no, it's just a story.
She was well aware that we did it. Or did she tell you that?
That we burned out there?
The springs, that time, and all, she
Didn't like that.
She was ready to lock her up, but she hid in, because she seen springs in the burn hole, so she knew what was in there.
But, I mean, the, the benefit of taking a week to do it is, you're gonna know how much you had after that one week, so for the most part.
Well, if it can hit that week, and if not, it's only your own, you know.
But then, I think in the balance of the year, what we should do is, we'll take them out there, be it under lock and key, but then have a fee, twenty bucks, thirty bucks, whatever, have a fee, we'll take them and store them, but you're gonna pay for disposal.
Tell them, tell them what I remember, oh, that'd be tough. And I agree.
We're gonna have to do something, I guess.
Yeah, we're gonna get it for free.
Twenty-five bucks an item, here we go.
Well, then I'll keep the, um, keep it to a minimum, I guess.
I hauled some crap home at Oaks to the dump, and it was fifty bucks a pickup load, that's what they charged. Whatever you can get on a pickup.
I don't know if like gypsies going down there.
It's on a ton. Well, we need to do something, Mike.
Well, it's like the problem, like, I, we actually have to do something, because if you don't do anything, then that's when you start having couches thrown in the ditch.
Right. Hundred percent.
I, I did call Shrubinsky's, that they rent out the dumpsters, the roll-offs.
Oh.
And they said it's, for them to bring one down, it's not a very big, it's like fifteen yard all little container, which isn't very big.
Couch, three beds.
Yeah, and, uh, he said it's two hundred and fifty bucks for them to come down and get rid of it. You know, and then if there's anything else in there that's not supposed to be mixed in with the couching and stuff like that, it's seventy-five dollars an hour for them to clean it out.
I don't blame you.
Would you know, we could just haul them ourselves, just for starters, and see what, how much stuff ends up out there that needs to be hauled.
I think, when I was in Arizona, they had where once a month, or once every other month, you could set stuff out, and they'd take a trailer load up at a time. So if you, maybe every two months, they could put it out with the, separate from the trash, and we'd take a trailer load up.
But then, can I see, would we still charge? You know, we'd have to agree to once a time, every time.
You're, you're gonna have to figure
You know, the trouble is, if we're saying, okay, it's once a month, or once every two months, like right now, I know there's a house with a couch sitting right beside it. Well, if that gets wet, that's gonna be heavier than hell. So they're gonna have them sitting beside their house, or behind the house.
No, I agree, you gotta make it
You gotta build with a no path, it's right now, no, we're seeing them
You gotta balance what he's saying, boy. They're gonna, I mean, to see it all over California. If it's expensive to dump your garbage, you're gonna get dropped, you're gonna dump it illegally.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm for finding an answer, it's people's garbage, let's just take care of it.
And Bill and I talked about, you know, it's a city barn, but the problem is, it's not under lock and key, so they can go down there and throw them in a pile, and we'll know where it came from. Where this is under lock and key, at least would know where it came from.
You're gonna have couches and shit showing up there all the time, just sitting on the outside of it, don't you think, or? And look how they had these dumpsters up here, God.
Yep.
Sure, that's the reason we love the dumpsters.
Well, I thought maybe for the city, you know, do like, get a dump trailer, where we can, you know, something like that too, but then, you know, I don't know.
Might have to be a big trailer, I don't know.
Right.
Which is a lot of air.
It's a lot of air. I don't know.
Well, should we offer a cleanup week, and then we'll just try and make some calls and figure out some better options for us?
And like, so if you had the same month every year, could you just, you know, just tell people for that extra dumping? Just increase everybody's monthly charge at one month, if that possible? Is that not available? Because I don't think you're gonna be able to figure out how to charge one guy eighty bucks, and the next guy twenty bucks, and
We may be getting to a point where we just say, no, I'm not gonna do it anymore. I mean, if we're having to do all this, these hoops, let's just say, you know, take care of your own, that's all I'm all, but they don't end up in your field up there. I don't know what the answer is, charge them too much, or don't charge them at all, or we're dumb to do it themselves. I don't know.
The problem is, is that weekly dumping cost is already going up, and I would just add it to.
Absolutely.
You know, then it would be on per item, and really, people aren't changing couches or mattresses.
If they already have twenty-two dollars to dump.
Time to change sheets?
I've been wetting the bed a lot.
Okay.
So we are gonna have a cleanup week?
I think we should probably do it.
Let's do it. Keep a close eye on this one.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
I would say I mean, if you guess, then that's
Well, if we're gonna do it, we better do it soon, because I was told that construction's gonna start in town here, and would you guys say, hopefully the next three or four weeks?
Yep.
We don't want couches sitting all over the way.
Under the road.
Yeah.
A paper over.
Saying, do we, you know? Give them a week or so.
Be plenty of time to get it in the paper and
Let's come up with an offer.
When are we at here?
So like the week of the twelfth, or something like that?
Twelfth through the sixteenth, or nineteenth through the twenty-third.
Right. What's a good, what's a good week for you? You don't want to do it.
It don't matter to me.
Say the nineteenth?
Is the weather gonna be warmed up, everybody's out cleaning the garages and doing everything by then?
Well, it's just gonna have to be.
They'll just do a lot of stuff you gotta carry, if they don't wanna do it.
But it needs to be, take your time, and just tell us when you wanna do it.
It's either then or never, this summer, I guess, I don't know. We can't have that mess sitting out there while we got construction going on, that's not gonna work.
And when do they start construction?
We're hoping in a month.
April nineteenth is what they're looking at for concrete, and then, uh, beginning of May for the whole shebang.
That's what they're fashioning, right?
Yeah. Dry, wanna get in and get it knocked out.
What do we have cleanup week today is what, the fifth or eighth?
Fifth.
Do the nineteenth, do the twenty-third, and you can, we can get it
Because we gotta, you know, you gotta write it up correctly, and make sure
Yeah, we're just
There's times where they haul big little trees out there, expecting a whole lot. Hang on, I gotta write it up correctly, so
Okay, so nineteenth through twenty-third?
Yep.
Okay. That's all we can do this year, guys?
Let's try it again.
Anything else, Bill?
I think that was it.
Can we, I'm gonna say we should address that, on Main Street, that break on the sidewalk there pretty soon, too?
Yeah, I called, uh, S and S over there, and he said you could come over and take a look at it.
Frost has gotta be out, we dug it all out, right?
Is that the one by the senior center?
Yeah, so we get them on books, those
What about across the street, when this building went down, there's one over there, right?
Is there?
Yeah, hey, what's good, the U C C church, we're gonna redo the sidewalk on the south side, where the church was. So he's got, you see there's what, senior center, the Faye Building.
That's S and S?
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's
Oh, the park, where we built that ramp up for a driveway, and sloped it up instead of the other way.
But a lot of dudes, like you said.
Sounds like you guys got it figured out, so, okay.
That should be just a minor little fight.
Then I think they want to do John's building at the same time. The forward.
Thought you guys did that.
We got too late last fall.
Oh, that's right.
I thought they did too, but
I thought I saw a bumper truck over there.
Maybe they're moving something.
They did, did they?
I don't think so.
They was there late at night?
I thought he did.
Driveway, didn't they?
No.
Well, that might've been the driveway.
I think they did it.
I'm pretty sure, yeah, because he was there late a few nights.
Where they do the building, and they're doing the driveway.
I think maybe that's it, Rick told me they got those five jobs.
Yeah.
They were gonna get them out of the way.
I remember, I remember the owners inside that hauling back and forth from the bumper truck to the back of the floor. Bug cats in there, so, I don't know.
Alright, well, you need to on top of it. All right, well, you need to on top of it, you're good.
Yeah.
We'll just jump back to more of those, as you guys can get going.
So, as you guys were talking about earlier, uh, construction's gonna get started early, which is good, hopefully done early. Get in here, if he wants to get in here, let's dry, you know, in case monsoons start and slow this construction down. So, um, we're gonna have pre-construction meeting this week, um, basically talking about, um, where they can stage materials, when they start and stop. Working hours, if the contractor has safety meetings, council doesn't need to be at that meeting, um, can if you want to. Bill needs to be at that meeting, but other than that, um, we'll type the minutes up and, and send it to Sherry, so the city's got the minutes for that. Proximal start date, they're looking April nineteenth, that's what they said last week, construction changes, it could, it could change. Um, they wanna start with the concrete work throughout the community, um, get a jump start on that. Um, beginning of May, they're, they're looking to come in and do the subgrade, grind up all the existing streets that we're replacing. So, they'll grind them up, they'll kinda roll them, keep them in place, traffic can still use them, can still drive on them. They'll pull off a couple blocks at a time, get the subgrade underneath the gravel prepped, and bring the gravel back, you know, they'll kinda leapfrog. As they go, but they'll grind most of it up right away, so you'll have, it'll be asphalt milling, is what it'll, it'll be. And they'll, they'll be responsible to maintain it, so if there's potholes or, or whatever that's, pops up, the contractor will have to blade it and make it passable for, for residents. Um, the agreements between the owner and the contractor, um, you have that, Sherry, um, looks like the contracts?
Oh, yeah, right.
Did you, did you guys sign those yet?
Yeah, they're signed and ready for you.
Okay, so I need that, and we'll give that to border states, so we're ready to go with those. Um, engineering amendment they have for you guys too.
You kept one of those books here?
Yep.
Okay, oh, can I have that back to me?
So this is the engineering amendment that we, we talked about, and they've already seen the numbers for this. Um, original amendment, agreement was for the design bidding, that portion of the special assessments of the, the work. Uh, we were able to knock about forty thousand off the design fee, um, so this, this amendment is to add in, um, construction administration. It adds in R P R, which is our guidance field here, um, and that's an hourly not to exceed contract. So, if construction gets done fast, we probably won't use that, that full amount. Um, we'll, we won't go over it, we'll monitor it, make sure we're, we're tracking along well. If we don't need to be here, we're not gonna be here, we're not gonna have a guy sitting here sixty hours a week with nothing going on, so. When the concrete's started, we'll be here to help them mark it out, and show what needs to be removed, and when they're setting grades, that type of stuff, we'll be here. We'll be here when they're paving, we'll be here when they're prepping subgrade, but if it's miscellaneous stuff, you guys don't want us here, we don't, we don't need to be here for that. So, um, that's our, that portion's hourly. Um, the increase for this contract is for a hundred and thirty-five thousand, um, five hundred dollars, what the, the increase is. So, um, feel free to, to take a peek at it, it's for, um, construction engineering, resident project representation. Um, detailed construction staking, and then the assessment calculation was part of agreement number one, so.
We saved forty, we give up another hundred and thirty-five?
Correct, yep. So you, the increase is a hundred and thirty-five thousand from the original agreement, is what it is, yep.
There's really sixteen different surveyors, technicians, programmers?
Actually, we have about forty.
Wow.
Um, these are the, the shortened versions here. A little rain, there's.
Can we throw in an iron pan? That's good. Looking good.
Um, another thing to mention when you guys look at that, interest rates are down again, looks like. So, um, I got the rate schedule today, there's some more documents I wanted to pick up from you, Sherry, from, um, Coilers International. They're, they quoted me today, one point nine, and he's thinking, might need to be a little better than that, maybe one point eight. So, also, you have a good construction price, and you got good interest rates, so.
I jumped back, we probably screwed it up, if construction starts April nineteenth, we probably shouldn't have that cleanup week that week.
Well, this is gonna be.
No, he says it's gonna be three weeks out, right?
Uh, the main bulk of it's gonna be May, so we'll, we'll get our official schedule from him this week. Um, the, the April nineteenth is, it's, they're gonna be starting on concrete work, so they'll be, they'll be saw cutting, pulling out eighty-eight ramps. It might, it might be okay.
Okay.
I think you.
Okay.
What's resident project representative?
Inspection is what it is.
Okay.
So, they're, they're called a resident, the industry changed that about ten years ago, from a construction inspector. We call them R P Rs now, it's a nationwide thing, it's called a resident project representative, is what it is. So that's the, that's the big hourly one.
Um, so how did we not have this on the first one?
That's what we, we originally discussed that when we set that agreement, um, the construction amendments would come later.
Um, it was always there in parentheses, I think it was a guess number, wasn't it?
Yep, it was always there in parentheses, we didn't know how big a project you'd do, so we didn't know contractor's timeline. Um, we're basing these off contractor's schedule too, so, um.
So they were there, they just were.
They were, they were always there, yeah, and the cost, the, the two million dollar cost estimate you saw, um, last month was around there too.
I haven't seen it anywhere.
Yeah, we just didn't have the official agreement.
So this was in that?
The two million.
Okay, so we're not adding.
You're not adding anything to the project, you're just.
Just wanna make sure, cause I'm sitting here wintering.
Finalizing the actual number.
You're, you're finalizing the actual agreement with more in here and on, on this, so, we like to do it later, so we go, what, how long construction's gonna take? Cause if we'd have, if we'd have done this, when, if you're looking at four million dollar project, this number's probably double, you know, or, or seventy-five percent more.
Sure.
No sense.
You guys have any questions on that? We just need a motion to accept that.
Correct, yep.
Um, or we wanna say this, part two of the agreement, or how do you?
Yeah, part two of the agreement, that and.
You guys have any more questions, if not, we'll take a motion, accept that? Which, are you looking for, the numbers?
Well, that particular number, what's the?
This here, you're saying?
Yeah.
Third page three? No, you take your time, please.
So, I'm, I'm showing on page three, I've shown the originals, and then the reductions from up there.
Right, yeah, he's got it.
Down, and then, then from here on.
Okay.
Okay.
It's seven, eight, and nine, is what we're adding in.
Well, I don't know what else we do. So, so move on, make a motion to approve amendment.
Hold on, the favor?
I. Um, assessment work, so we need, we need to get working with the assessment committee, um, we'll, we'll start on that. We have started that process, um, we'll, we'll partner up with the assessment committee, get our first meeting set up, so. We wanna make sure to get that to the county this fall, so you can get your first collection this fall, so you make the payment. Your first payment for the project will be next spring, to the, the bond company. Um, and then we, we're working to close financing, there's some documents we need to pick up from Sherry tonight, and we'll get the loan closed with, with, uh, Coilers International. They're, they might have to come out here at a specific date, um, he didn't know when the loan closed, I think they'll, they'll be here to get some signatures from the city on, on the actual loan closing too. But I don't know what date that is, he thought within this month, so. So, we're good, things are, things are looking good, schedule looks good, good reputable contractors, so we're excited to.
I'm excited, starting here, that's great news.
Yeah, that's.
Did you need me to sign this, or?
You and, I think, um, Sherry assigned that, one version of that, I've got an extra copy.
Okay, perfect. I didn't print it off, so I didn't sign it, but it is.
And grab the documents, and Sherry. Michael's an engineer in our office too, so he can be out here too, on this project, um, he'll be out here for part of inspection. And he's been here coming meetings, just sort of getting to know the guys too. He'll get the recon, he'll be handling some of a lot of data and stuff.
He's got anything else going on?
And then that one.
Good news.
Thank you. Do you have that border state primary contact for that, do you talk to him more?
Father Luke, yeah, he's, he's telling me.
Okay, I got a few questions for him, for apartment building, you know, getting in there and paving that one, we do all that street work, so.
Oh, I'm sure Luke will be here Wednesday.
Yeah, well, that's a good time to get cocked, you know, and swim here.
Yeah, I mean.
I guess the, right.
You guys got a good asphalt price, I imagine, you'd probably honor that on something, sure, you know, if he's paving. Asphalt has really gone up a lot, we've been, we've been in projects last week, it was up to ninety-eight bucks a ton, so. Can't remember what we got for here, but you know, okay. Uh, seventy-six, I think? Seventy-six.
Okay, yeah.
That's a huge difference, and that's. Okay, well, thanks, guys, um, you guys got my number if something comes up.
Do you guys have a copy of what we just said?
Yep, they have all their copies.
All right, so why don't you give me yours, please?
I think I have a next one.
Here, I, I'll give him, so I got one.
Yeah, I wanna keep them all in file.
Yep, you have the docs in there? Yeah, the docs, okay.
All right, thanks, guys. Should we just move it into the auditor then?
Yep.
Okay?
Okay, mine was, I was telling you that I was going to the spring workshop on the twentieth and twenty-first, but, um, most of you know, I had to, I. I'm leaving for the next twelve days, I have an emergency with my family, so.
Okay.
Um, I won't be going to it now.
Okay.
And I'm hoping to get reimbursed for paying for it. But I think, and then if you're looking there, there's a letter from Logan County Commissioners, they do this every year, you just gotta prove them.
Which pile, I'm sorry, I got so much.
The Logan County one, you see the copy, you know, it's seen here. It's right here, turn it around. And then, you know, then I have to, we have to sign this, they're, they're starting to have to sign it year after year. I think they, we had read upon it, now they've written it up in writing, so I wanna make sure you guys approve it before I pay the bill.
That's for the assessor.
For Trish?
It's that four hundred dollars?
A year, that's a yearly bill.
Okay.
Cause we never had it paid before, right?
I, I don't think so, no.
I think they took it out of the general, and that, for some reason, that's come to a stop, you know, the county general.
We paid it, I think, last year, but it was just, they're talking about it, and now they wanna, every year, have, have you guys sign saying that you're willing, that it's been paid, from what I read. It's gonna be a yearly bill we have to pay.
I was understanding the state will stop for that.
Okay.
So that's just our contract there that we have to sign.
We don't have to approve anything.
We don't?
And I know it goes through, but.
Second by Jeff, all of your favor?
All right.
Who did the first one?
Lauren.
So I need to sign my copy then, give it to her?
I, you just gave it to me, you just signed it, remember I gave it to you right away at the beginning of the meeting?
Oh, okay, yeah.
And, um, that's it for me.
Water, sewer, and policing?
Nothing.
Streets, landing, and library?
Boy, I just hit the ground running here, last week, so, anything lights out?
I drove around, we had a few out, but did he take care of, I haven't been back around, but, yeah.
Did he?
Yep.
Appreciate it, thank you.
We, uh.
Five or six of them?
We had some dark alleys and streets that I wanted to get lit up, you know, we went around, there was a few, but, yeah, so, as long as he got in, good deal.
I talked to him about that one, just down from the care center, told him it was on the opposite side, going down with that alley of.
There was like two of them that flickered on and off, just randomly or something weird.
Down there by Tom's.
Yep. Perfect.
And then, uh, then the one in the, uh, the church, those big floodlights in the church I talked to about, did he ever fix those?
Boy, I don't know.
Yeah, there's a big light in the church there, okay, perfect.
He was, I'm unaware, he was laid up, so it kinda probably.
Yeah, he, he just said, he just kinda forwards it to the other, that one.
Sure, other than that, we're good?
I'm good.
Garbage, airport, ambulance, and health?
Well, the, uh, wind kinda knocked down the road out there, and the access road going to the airport. Um, it's still passable, but I talked to Dave, he looked at it, and he's, well, he thinks we should throw a load of clay. So we can go out to that city's pile of clay.
Clay on, it, it, that riprap away, and then you wanna put?
No, put clay in first, then he's gonna come in with rock and riprap.
Okay.
And then we're gonna put the gravel and fill it, that's what he thinks would be best.
We got more riprap?
The gravel?
Well, I, I'm, I'm, that's just particular, I, I just threw that out, but I don't know if he wants gravel or not.
Oh.
He just wants clay and the riprap, and that's as far as we got, so.
Yeah, it, you could tell where the riprap was high enough.
Right, it is ate it right up.
If it just ate it.
I suppose that's pretty strong.
Backwash it to the east there.
There's about, what, four spots?
Yeah.
Were ripped.
Yeah, it did, it is a good damage, you can still get out there, but.
But you're okay with clay on the road, and then, then riprap off, just like, we haven't done riprap?
I don't know.
There's some out there.
Well, he says, yeah, but he doesn't know if he can get out there to get it on there, because the road's not that good, he'd like to put the riprap in first. Dump the clay, and then put the riprap in, and then build the road up first before he goes out there. And there isn't really that much out there, I don't know if there'd be enough to do all that, you know? The rock that's out there.
Yeah, there isn't that much out there.
Yeah, he's gathering riprap now, cause he's got other roads, he's more in growth, he's not gonna want that one, and a couple other ones he's gonna be bidding on. They're getting riprap ready, now that it's dry, before it starts raining or whatever, so now would be the time to do it, but. But, uh, yeah, other than that, that's all I got.
He's gonna get back to you on that thing, with Austin, or who are we talking to?
Yeah, well, he talked to, between us and the airport.
Okay.
Before we go, and we're trying to do as much as I can get Bill to walk there and move the clay.
Sure.
And dump that in, and then he'd just be basically riprap, but I'm not sure how ready to get it out, but, he's not gonna be able to drive a truck like that.
You know, the wonder of God, just, once a guy gets across with the people.
He can get across, there's a loader. So you don't have to, I don't want to. I don't think. Put the boats.
You know, just at least get it wide, except.
As long as we can keep the big, kind of equipment out of there, I think we can.
And I don't wish it would skitter and.
Yeah, wow, that's lots of work to think about.
See how easy it is out there?
I really, that wind didn't wash it down, drop that thing when it got there, it was gone.
Yeah. All right, we'll just stay on top of that then.
And then we can build up that, that road's got so many dips in it, last year we did it.
Yeah.
That's why I asked John about just getting some gravel for on that clay for the fishermen.
Okay.
That go out there.
Fire in parks for Lauren? We'll move into old business then. More engineer, they were here, so we're good there. Trash, you took care of all that, I believe, right? Tax deed paperwork?
That was old business, that was for the church.
That's what I thought.
I sent over the stuff and then they took it to their board of directors.
Okay, so it's basically in process?
It's all in process.
Alright, new business. When do we have a wage review for maintenance department?
I was asked to put it on the general.
You know, I can't remember. Didn't we usually do wage review in the fall, like November?
I don't think we did.
We overlooked it this year.
See, I don't guess long enough to have been through two for my three years, so this way there might be due for another one. You just want to look at it. Wage review, you said. Two years ago.
Was it two years ago?
I think it was two years ago.
I thought I was on.
I can't remember. I got to thinking about that.
Well, you should know when you're getting a paycheck. When's the last time you got a raise, Bill?
Well, you've been here three years, right?
Yeah, April first and three years.
And I've been through.
It was two years ago in March.
Well, we just gave you that seven dollars a year for your insurance, I mean.
You don't want us to forget.
Go until November, that's, or October, November.
Well, let's come up with a date for it, I guess, if you want to do November.
When do we submit the budget? That's October?
I think so.
Let's just give them.
You know, actually, we should actually do it prior to the budget. That way.
Maybe September.
You better behave from now to then, Bill.
You got a September.
You good with that?
Yeah.
We got to put this in the calendar or something so we remember every year, so we don't do this again.
So you do these yearly?
He's saying put it up with the.
I would say so forever.
You know, we should, if we're going to do it in August or September.
Doesn't mean we have to get it.
Right, no, it makes sense to me, yeah.
And we'll talk about it, yeah.
And maybe we did do it a year, I can't remember anymore. But it was.
Let's come up with September one and then we'll get it in before.
Okay, and you're good with that? Okay. Thanks for bringing that up, Lauren. I didn't, I guess I didn't realize that, so.
And when you look into your next one.
You have the same issue?
I gave you a full year. I gave you a folder now, this is.
Yes, we have issues with that.
Here's what it's going to look when we are now asking for permits. You'll be signing the bottom when you say okay to approve them. It'll be the next page, and they believe you. You'll have to, once you guys approve them, they have to fill this out.
Didn't you make this simpler? What the hell is all this?
No, what you're doing is signing right here. Once you take your action, sign it.
Okay, so we need to make motion, let me put this right here, who's first? For Marlene L's, for a new roof on her house. I hope you guys are generous because all three of us have started on these, so.
If it's under, anything under two thousand is only ten dollars. Over two thousand, right?
Well, this is going to be, this is going to be over two thousand, I'm sure. Like I said, for a new roof, motion to approve Marlene's?
Yeah.
Jeff, second?
Second.
All those in favor? Just quick and I'll sign them later. Glenn Ockerman, eight by ten plastic shed?
He's on the, on the end of names?
Klein Gardner's own house, oh, right across from the owner's house.
Do we want to take each one individually then?
There's like four of them in there.
Usually we won't have this much, but now that we got the system rolling. So for his motion to approve eight by ten for Glenn Ockerman, so moved. All those in favor? Steven Mo's, installment shingles on his house. Moved to approve. Lauren, second? All those in favor? Andy Heflin, new roof? I'm just going to keep the one by four.
I need some motions.
I'll approve it.
Who seconded it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll sign those.
Then I seen the guy that's right across the street from you.
There's holes?
He's putting in a security fence?
I don't know what he's doing. He never came down here and asked for anything.
And then also I noticed to do a shingle, that house, that Klein Gardner house right to the north of us. I think it's registered maybe to Keith.
Okay, we got that for you. Did Morgan Larson get one? I heard she was doing.
Nope.
So I'll have to, I'll have to call her and make sure she gets a permit. I don't know what she's doing, I haven't been over.
It looks like she's finally putting that fence around her daycare.
Okay, so yeah, we'll have to get, that one's probably ten dollars anyway, but. Okay, I'll make sure I call her and let her know.
Then you got the guy right across the street from you?
I've got his name down here, and what I'm going to do is, we'll give him an application. You know what, you don't even ask Morgan, I'm just going to go bam 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 tomorrow and give him all applications and then they got a tournament here. That's why we did it this way.
That works. That works.
And what about Mike Martin? His was a while ago, I thought.
His was a while ago and he paid for all his permits.
Yep. Alright, raffle license for Gackle Park Board for three bikes to go into Danny's place to raffle off. Is that all the same thing?
It's all one same thing, that's what they're about.
Motion to approve that, so moved. Bubba?
Second.
I'm second.
Larry, all in favor? Transfer of liquor license to Seigman's from Kevin for Danny's place. Motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion to approve that.
Jeffrey? Taylor, all those in favor? Gackle Co-op would like to apply for beer license. I am still not quite sure how that works. I thought we had three as a city, but is that still, is that still how it works? Like we have the.
What, what are they thinking?
They just want to do beer, right?
Just beer.
So they have to have a separate room or something?
She could have it in the back room.
There'll just be a sign up for, if you want to buy it, then go get it, go in the back and we get it for you.
I believe, unless it's changed now, the city of Gackles had three, and they can take over the old bowling alley one, correct? Or do we have to apply as a city for another? Do we have to check into that?
Because yeah, we used to have three. I don't know if it's ever changed.
We better look into that.
Make sure we have one available.
And if it's available?
And if it's available, I guess they don't have a problem with it.
You won't be selling before the next meeting, will you?
No, I think it's mainly over hunting as much as long as you've got it for hunting. That's who we get the most requests for it.
So it's not going to take a while obviously to get your room ready and go? I hate to approve it, and then we find out we got to go through different steps.
Well, I don't want to.
I mean, what's, what's the new ownership of the Cantina, what's their?
They have no problem with it.
They have no problem with it? Well, that's my only concern.
The new ownership and the older ownership both didn't have any problems. Because most people are going to go there, go during the day, if you want to have beer and then on Sunday.
I wonder where would be written if we have a limit on how many?
I thought it was, we were supposed to apply to the state for more, and I couldn't be off on that, I'm not positive.
Boy, I have no clue.
Teresa called and she checked. I don't know what she all come up with, but I know she was taking care of that end of it, and she was just.
Well, I just know that Streeter had to do that for the region up top once or twice, so maybe I could talk to them about it.
See, and they don't give you a state license until the city approves the city license.
Well, we can sure approve it then and get that going, as well as not.
Yeah, because they won't, you first.
Then they can decide.
That's the first thing they ask for if the city approves.
If there's one available, I guess they could give it, and they will approve.
And I'll just say this, I'm going to abstain from voting on it.
You can't just.
Right. You better be quiet, too.
I.
I'm all for it.
I approve it.
And I second.
Whatever we have to do, you get the license. If we have one. And then if it comes up that we need to do more licensing, we'll have a revote.
If there's a problem.
We can always amend it too. So, motion from Taylor, second from Jeff. And then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also have, what do I do with that now, guys?
No discounts.
Before we move ahead though, were you guys all aware of the complaint that was brought to the city? From the, I'm going to say this right, it's Department of Justice, but it's for Disabled Veterans Act, that letter we all read. Couple months ago. We got another letter, we're going to intermediation. I just, I talked to Lauren about it. I talked to the guy that's setting it up. And I think it's, we just sent it over to Isaac, basically, we'll put it that way. Because I don't want to get, say something wrong, get pissed and do something stupid, that's going to hurt us or cost us more money. So I just sent it, so now we have a meeting set up with him. It's going to be, I had to give him three dates that would work. I'm not sure of the date yet, but it's just going to be Lauren and I on that phone call with Isaac, so we might have to have a quorum, no meeting, no nothing. And we'll sure let you know how it goes or what date it is. And also I have to get, what do I want to say, an estimate for PA system in here. So I just figured I'd call Todd Mo's, have him set that all up for us. We'll sure let you know how that goes, and it was a complaint that we put our heads down and don't talk loud enough. We'll just leave it at that for now, until we figure out what we're going to, we got to go into mediation. Figure out if we as a city council agree on whatever we need to do. And then the person that brought it up against the city has to agree on it, and then it's, we stop there, and if we disagree, then it gets taken over to the Department of Justice, and I'm not fighting them without a lawyer, so.
So either way, we got to pay Paul.
Either way, we're spending a ton of money to get a lawyer, so, yep. But yeah, we'll just, we'll let you know how that goes, Lauren and I, when we get, it's going to be sometime in April here, I think it was either the 12th, 13th, or 21st or something. I'll let you guys know, but. Do you remember what I told you? Well, 13th to the 21st or something, but yeah, I had to give them three options, but I'll let you guys know on the PA system also what we come up with. And I don't know if that's out of the city's pocket, or if the Disabled Veterans Act paid that or not. But I just don't want to say too much and get us into trouble, so. We'll just keep moving forward with that, but I thought it was the best decision to just leave it Isaac, so. So we can move into water bills. US Post Office, last payment in February.
Yep.
Of three forty-three, due by four, 10, 21, 227.
And if it's not paid, then they get shut, they get a shut off notice.
On the 10th of April?
Yeah, what go oh at the time would be two months. Once, when it was on the last time, there hasn't been a payment made. That payment was made, and then there was no payment made after that again, for two. Now this is my second one. So they have one, and now the ones due on the 10th will be the second month, and then they issue the shut off notice for the 25th. And you'll have another one on there.
And Juan Corre is the same, same thing? Just stay on top of it, appreciate it. The other one in yellow is paid in full, I see.
Yep, they paid, there's a full. And actually, we only have three of one this time, which is very good.
Everyone's got the bills in front of them? There's questions on those, take a look?
No, I was just asking.
We're that one that says for the general, I haven't been able to call and talk to them. I have never seen one like that. It came direct deposit to our account, so I don't know exactly what that's for. But they gave us four thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars.
And we don't know where, what?
I don't know, I even had, asked Sam if she knew where that money comes from. And she said she'd never had it before, and there was no entry in my computer, so I had to, I have to put it in the computer as miscellaneous income right now. Until I find out who this general is that gave us this money. I would assume it's, I mean, it's a state, but I don't know if it has to do with coronavirus, I don't know what it has to do with, but it is a state entity. So it's not the state treasurer, it's.
Joe's giving out more money again, I see.
Yeah, it came from somewhere.
Sleepy Joe's out again.
And if you'll see that DOT, that easement, they paid that three hundred dollars right away. And we did pay for the scraper this time.
I see that, so we bought it.
Well, we had agreed on it a while back, but we never really said yes, let's buy it for sure. We talked about it, but you guys said, and then all of a sudden I even said, you guys say you were buying it? It was a yes.
Any questions on that then? If not, we'll take a motion to approve bills. So moved. Taylor, second? All in favor? Alright, date and time of next meeting, Monday, May 3rd, at seven PM. Does that work for everyone?
You should have it eight, bubba?
Yeah, it would help.
If he can make it, it makes no difference to me.
Want to change it to eight?
I'm going to bump it to eight for a month or two.
Did you hear that?
What?
We're going to change the hour to eight. Things are going to have these guys getting, him getting in the field, so hopefully he can make it for us.
Might be done by then.
Alright, move to adjourn. Second, all those in favor? Thanks, guys.
Do a second and done? And it is eight, so.